Good evening. It's 7:02 PM and this is the meeting of the East Lime Ad Hoc Short Term Rental Committee. I'd like to call a meeting to order. And if you could rise, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are, we record.
Can I put this up?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're on the second item of the agenda this evening, and that would be public delegations. This is the opportunity for the public to speak about anything on our agenda this evening. Does anyone wish to speak? We're good. Okay. Okay. All right. The third item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And so those minutes would be the minutes of our last meeting, December 11th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So me.
Okay, Gary, thank you.
Sir.
On the second. Any discussion, any corrections? On those minutes? I'm not hearing any, so not hearing any. You can take a vote. All those in favor approving the minutes of the regular meeting of this committee on December 11th, 2023?
Aye.
Signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Okay, thanks. Alrighty. The fourth item on the agenda is the report and opinion of Attorney Mark Zamarka. Attorney Zamarka cannot be here at this meeting this evening. He had a family obligation to tend to, and I think if we should have received in our emails, the, I know we received a lot of information, so take your time to find it. The particular document is titled Ordinance versus Regulation. And this is an outline of what Attorney Zamarka would have spoken about this evening. So has everyone had a chance to take a look at this? Okay, that's great. So I think I'll just summarize just quickly the points here. And this will be, like everything else, a part of our record book. And so I had, I had asked Attorney Zamarka for some clarification on the, on the interplay between ordinances and regulations, since both are happening in this, in this regulatory world of short-term rentals. So, and he pointed out that there are, within East Lime, well, he gives definitions of ordinances, of what is an ordinance versus what is a regulation, and the applicability of each. He also goes on to talk about how there are three quasi municipal beach communities, which is important for our purposes as we try to address the issues of that arise with short-term rentals. And those three beach communities are Black Point, Giant's Neck, and Crescent Beach, special act communities, so they can enact and have enacted their own zoning and ordinances. He, he goes on to, Attorney Zamarka goes on to say that it's his advice strongly that, that we should be thinking about an ordinance and not a zoning regulation. And gives his rationale for that. In that his feeling is that the ordinance would supersede, you know, and help, and help application of regulation to the three beach communities. And then he goes on to talk about the limitations of zoning and, you know, pre-existing non-conforming uses. When you, when you regulate, the tendency is to regulate going forward. And so you have to deal with what's past practices. And so that's, that's his summary of, of, of that first issue I asked him about. And then the second set of issues had to do with deed restrictions and homeowners associations and covenants that run with the land. Because my question was, you know, effect of, let's say, an ordinance or any other type of regulation on those, on those particular deed restrictions. And he was pretty clear here, and I think it's pretty clear, that those restrictions are between, between members within that particular association or within that particular neighborhood, if their covenant's running with the land. And so the, the issue of whether or not you have short-term rentals or how you'd regulate them is kind of, we can't cover everything. And that would be one example of how we can't cover everything. So if, if anyone has any questions or other thoughts as we're going along, and even if they come to you through the rest of the evening tonight, not necessarily at this point, we just, you know, you can shoot me an email and then I'll get those questions answered and directed to, to Attorneys Zamarka. But that's, so that's, that's that in a nutshell.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So just if I may, I, I, you know, this is the opinion of the town attorney, who does a great job and he serves the town with distinction in everything he does. I'm not sure that I agree in its entirety for this. So I just want, for the record, that this is his opinion for us to consider as we make our deliberations moving forward.
Correct, correct.
And this is not a directive in any way.
Correct. And it's kind of, and thanks for jumping in with that question, because it reminds me of a point I wanted to make, which is that Attorney Zamarka wants to hold off on any final opinions on all of this until we get, you know, perhaps the Supreme Court decision coming down. That was one of the things he mentioned in his email to me. Doesn't necessarily mention it here in this, you know, in this particular outline. But he just wanted to make sure that we understood that this is sort of, as we're going along and we have questions of him. And I just wanted him to, I have this thing about putting pen to paper and that helps us to clarify. And I know it was a bit of a, a school report kind of assignment for everyone, but I do think it starts making us sharper in the way that we think about the issues that short-term rentals can present or not present, as the case may be. So I, my thinking there was, let's, let's sort of begin with, with the basics. So ordinance versus regulation. And, and we're going to be coming back to that, because that to, that topic will keep coming up since we have so much zoning regulation throughout the town. So, but again, if you have any, likewise, I, I don't agree with every single thing here, but I will articulate those points as we go along in, in, in his outline. Okay, so. Yes, go ahead, Dan.
From Crescent Beach.
Yes.
Although we have our own zoning authority. And we have some of our own zoning regulations. Still, all of our building permits and things like that go through the town for their approval. So we only have a small piece of the pie that we have some regulations for. So I'm not sure, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. It's just based on living in the community for a while. Saying that the East Lime regulations do not apply to these communities. I'm not sure what he means by that.
Yeah, so, so, so basically, we have our set of, let's say, our townwide zoning regulations. And when these beach communities enact regulations, they can also, they can stick, they can, they can be more or less particular, more or less covering topics, so to speak. And they can also integrate, which they often do, provisions of the East Lime zoning, existing zoning regulations, the townwide regulations. And sometimes you'll see that referenced in the sets. I have, because I've been looking more closely, the last weeks I've been studying these regulations of those three beach communities a little more closely. And it's kind of a, a repeated theme. You'll see, you'll see that. So, or they'll just say, what's not, you know, what's not covered here is covered there. Or if in case of a conflict, the more, the more specific regulation would apply, that kind of thing. So yeah, it's not, it's not that there's a whole perfect set of Black Point Beach Association zoning regulations versus the Town of East Lime. So there's much overlap. But, but the, the unique situation is that these communities are given the, given that authority to, you know, parse it out as they wish, you know? So, okay. So with that, we'll go on to item five. And not everyone is here this evening. Gary Cacciallo had business out of town. And John, Selena couldn't make the meeting as well. So not everyone's here. But let's see within the time, you know, reasonable amount of time, not going too crazy here, what we can get through on some of the member reports that we, we had to provide. So I was thinking of kind of beginning at, if you remember our list from the last meeting, I was thinking of beginning at the beginning. But if, if anyone wants to jump in and go first, is that okay with, I think it was Greg and Gary, you guys?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go.
Yes.
I think Gary's done a much better job than I have, but I have some comments that I'd like to leave in.
Sure. Okay, so let's pull that, that one out. So that's this document, for those of you at home eventually. This is the document, East Lime Short Term Rental Committee, Permits, Inspections, and Occupancy Options. Okay? Thanks for typing it up.
What is this document?
So that's the document that Gary and Greg have put together.
It's our research.
That's the.
Yep, okay.
That was point number one, is that what you're saying?
And, and for number two as well.
Few of the attachments were marked, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was one, two, nine, and ten.
Yes, yes. The four of those things are, well, it's so interrelated, it's hard to separate them out. Okay.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yes, go ahead, Greg.
I think, I think our comments are fairly redundant. I don't have a lot here, but, you know, I kept trying to wade into looking at individual towns and what their regulations were. And I just, there's 169 towns in Connecticut. It quickly got overwhelming. But the ones that I did look at, kind of a statistical approach, eight out of 10 had some regulation. Several banned them outright, not many. And often, the regulations that they had were basically the same regulations that they used for bed and breakfasts. Which is an interesting approach. So some have specific regulations about short-term rentals, and you'll hear this more, Gary's documented requiring a permit, required permit.
Just a minute, just a minute. So you're using the word regulation, so that's where it is. It's not an ordinance they use, they use regulations.
Most of them are zoning regulations.
Regulations, okay.
Most of the towns.
That's where it makes sure you're using the word as defined by Zamarkas. Just not interchanging regulation and ordinance.
The comment we made earlier that East Lime doesn't have any regulation concerning short-term rentals is, is sort of incorrect. As we heard from Mr. Mulholland, Gary set up an appointment, we talked to Mr. Mulholland. He said if, if it's not expressly permitted by the town, then it is not permitted. And that short-term rentals are not permitted. However, we'll come back to that in a second. East Lime does have regulations concerning bed and breakfasts. And they do have regulations for bed and breakfasts in each one of the zoning districts that are listed. As far as we can tell, and we've talked about this before, the zoning is not enforced, other than in Pine Grove, where there's some special circumstances that allow them to basically ban short-term rentals. And again, instituting either a new permitting process for all rentals in East Lime or expanding the permitting process currently in place for bed and breakfasts would be a positive step. We don't know the extent of the issues that we're looking at without a permitting process. Such a process is very common and would be acceptable to many of those from the public hearing that we talked, that we had earlier. The instance of a permit implies the ability to revoke the permit, giving disregard for association, community norms and rules some bite. In summary, in spite of Mr. Mulholland's comments, I would recommend a permit system to the Board of Selectmen. And I'd include the standard items, address, floor plan, number of parking spots, number of bedrooms, bathroom, safety inspection, fee, capacity, contact numbers for the owner and local host. And that's what I have.
Thanks, Gary. Would you like to add to that?
Yeah. So Greg was looking at registrations and I was looking at permits. But it's, those two things are kind of interrelated. So as I was starting the research, this first page of this thing, I was trying to figure out what are our options here? And it's, it ranges from doing nothing, just leaving things at status quo, not making any recommendations, to a simple annual registration. If we went one step further, it would be a permitting process. One step further from that would be a permitting process with a safety inspection. And then permit inspection regulations on occupancy, parking noise, a whole array of things. The other thing we could do is recommend either a total ban or, as you had mentioned, a cap of some sort on the number that we would allow. So that kind of framed it in my mind of where I thought we were heading. Greg and I did go to, to meet with Bill Mulholland. And Greg's correct in saying, while there's no language addressing short-term rentals, Bill's contention is that no language means there's no permit, you can't have them. What he in fact has, though, is there's no oversight, there's no enforcement of this unless there's a complaint. And if there's a complaint, he has a letter that he sends to address the complaint. If it's not fixed, there's another letter, three strikes, and he issues a cease and desist. And he says that that's been working well, that there's no real outcry, that that seems to be working well. However, in the same, and he said in his personal and professional opinion, he would leave it the way it is. In the same breath, though, he said if the Board of Selectmen make an ordinance or there's zoning regulations, that his office could oversee that permitting or registration process. He says he's probably adequately staffed to do it. Maybe he would have to add some more hours to one part-time person. But he didn't seem like it would be overwhelming to take this on. So with that, I started looking at the permitting process. This is page two of, of the report. By having a permitting process, it's a more formal way of regulating and having oversight. In southeastern Connecticut, Preston, Ledyard, and Basra all have annual STR permit requirements. Basra handled it with an ordinance governing short-term rentals. Ledyard had an ordinance which sunsetted in 2022. And they replaced it with zoning regulations. Preston has by far the most exhaustive registration and permitting process. They demand not only a safety inspection, but a building inspection as well, as well as site plans and water.
Just a lot.
It's, it's onerous. And they have, I don't know if you read the story of the day last week, but Preston has put a moratorium on allowing STRs. They've done this through zoning regulations, not ordinance. But whatever they're doing there, they put a pause, hit the pause button, because they need to look at it. So I looked at those three and tried to find some areas of common ground. And on the permit applications, it's like Greg mentioned. Contact information, name, email, phone address, contact, if it's not the owner, who is the person to contact who would be available. Have the address, number of bedrooms, number of all-street parking spaces. The, the permitting process determines whether the property owner is up to date on their property taxes. They have to have proof of insurance. And the annual fees vary. In Basra, it's 200. In Ledyard, it's 200. In Preston, it's 150 when you first apply, and then $100 for a renewal. And without the permit, the STRs cannot operate in the town. Why permitting, I think, gives, puts more teeth to this, is that enforcement process. No permit, no business. Some of the reasons that Ledyard uses, has for denying a permit is if the application's not complete or the fee is not paid, if the application's out of compliance with the town's zoning regulations, if the applicant is delinquent, or if the property has zoning, building, fire, health violations. And the permits can get pulled if there are repeated complaints and an STR application contains false statements or the wrong contact information. I should say, too, that all three of these towns have appointed a designated person who handles the permit applications, the inspections, and the enforcement when there, when there are complaints. I don't know if those people are full-time or part-time or in the zoning department or what. That, that's going to take further research.
Could you, could you tell us how often these inspections are done, the zone, the fire, health?
In, in Ledyard, Preston, and Basra, they're annual. The permit is an annual permit. And so every year, there's an inspection. In Preston, they demand both a building inspection and a safety inspection. The fire department handles the safety inspections in all three towns.
Thank you.
I assume they're charging for those and that is a, definitely a revenue generator on so many, so many inspections.
Yes, and.
So that's above and beyond the $200 permit fee, there's an inspection fee?
Well, I, I didn't actually go into that to find that out, but we could do that. I did interview Bill Bundy, the fire marshal who addressed us earlier. And in my own mind, before I sat down with him, I was thinking, you know, inspections might be more than we need to do here. But he is a very strong advocate for annual inspections. And he's coming at it completely from a, a safety standpoint. And he said, Greg had done an estimate that there's maybe 200 STRs in town. And that was based just on VBRO and Airbnb, right? So, but there's a number of other places and there's places that don't advertise. For our purposes here, we were saying, let's say 200 is, is the number. And both Mulholland and zoning said he's got the staff to handle the permitting process. And Bundy, the fire marshal, said he's got the staff to handle the inspections. He says that they do about 1,500 inspections a year. And so another 200 more would not overly burden them. He said that an inspection that his office handles for a house of under 3,000 square feet is $65. So if we were to do a permitting process and we decided it was $200 for the permit, it could be 135 for the permit and 65 for the, or it could be any combination of that. But it's not an onerous amount to put on. And Bill said that what they do on the safety inspections are those bullet points there on page three. Confirming they have working and adequate smoke detectors, working fire extinguisher, check the fire pits, review parking access, especially entrance and egress. Make sure those are clear. Determine the number of bedrooms and beds and check for faulty wiring. He said it takes, a typical inspection takes about 15 minutes. So again, this was a surprising revelation to me, because I was expecting not that kind of enthusiasm for a component of this. So as I mentioned, Preston requires both a building inspector and a fire marshal. They require a site plan, elevation drawings, a legal notice published in the newspaper. It sounds like we don't want STRs in town. And I suspect that might be some of the things that they're running into there. There's so much to it. So that was it on, any questions on inspections or permits?
Just a comment. It seems as though, from what you've put together, that we see, we'll call it a regulatory scheme. You know, that's the word I always use, but a regulatory system whereby zoning is amended or changed to allow for these, for the STRs. Then there's a, then there's a permitting process through zoning. And then sometimes there's, on top of it, there's an ordinance, which just has, let's say, the registration process. So it's, and Groton has done that as well. So there's this, this sort of marrying. I mean, after reading what you guys had put together, it's great, thank you. It seems as though it's, we can see this interplay now of zoning plus ordinance. This is a good first example for the committee to see that. Go ahead.
Yeah. Basra's ordinance is very simple, direct, straightforward, but comprehensive. And I've got a copy of it here, I can share it with, I've got Preston's, I've got Ledyard's, and I've got Basra's.
It would be, excuse me, interesting to see if Basra, with the ordinance, has what their zoning looks like. You know, where, where the, where the allowance or the, the authority for having the STRs comes. So that would be an interesting question.
Right.
Okay. All right.
And then finally, I was asked to look at the occupancy regulations. And I took the, those three towns, Basra's, Ledyard's, and Preston's. Occupancies all over the map, but they largely kind of circle around the number of beds or the number of bedrooms. So I've got some examples here. In, in Nashville, their limit is twice the number of sleeping rooms plus four. So a two-bedroom house could have six people. I'm sorry, eight people.
That was a test, thank you.
New York City's has a very strict thing that limits to two people and the owner must be occupied. Basra's goes by, theirs is, the ordinance says, it's either all the members of an immediate family or five unrelated persons. That's the parameters. But the STR officer in that town can actually set what the number is as, in the permitting process. And children under age three are not counted as occupants there. In Ledyard, it's under the age of 12 are not counted as, as occupants. They do not allow unaccompanied minors. Ledyard's maximum occupancy of a rental is two people per provided bedroom. And Preston, that one is individually determined by the zoning board or the STR officer in the zoning department at the time of the, of the permit. Greg put me on to Simsberry, which has a very, very bureaucratic solution, approach to this. But theirs is six persons maximum or two persons per bedroom, whichever is less. And then there were some other things that I found. Outdoor parties are prohibited, sleeping outside is prohibited. And for most of these, parking needs to be off-street. So there needs to be parking on the property to accommodate the renters.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. That was very comprehensive and very helpful. Okay. And we can come back and discuss in totality, too. So we'll just kind of report, ask questions as we need to for clarification and then come back, I think. Okay, so next on that list would be, and I think this was John and Paul, the annual income statements, property assessment adjustments.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Number three says annual income statements, property assessment adjustments. And it's a fairly simple question. You know, do we want to go along with that or don't we? So there's not much really to this until you start looking at it. And then I remember the words of the late, great Bob Marion, who I've served with many years ago on a bylaws review committee. And he cautioned us to beware of unintended consequences. And I think, I think as we get into a lot of these things, we're going to see that. But currently, the Eastline Assessor requires owners of rental properties, long-term rental properties, to annually file income statements. There's no permit for those properties. There's no registration for those properties. It's a form that you fill out. And you have to do that annually. So if we're going to work with short-term rentals, and they are, as the Supreme Court is looking at it, on the same par as long-term rentals, then I don't think that this would be an onerous requirement for short-term rentals who fill out a similar form, listing income. So I note that both long-term rentals and short-term rentals are not permitted in the zoning regulations in the town of Eastline because I reviewed the zoning regulations today, and I looked through every section and every district, and there was no mention of a 12-month rental or a long-term rental. So if we're going to go by Mr. Mulholland's interpretation that it's not mentioned, it's not permitted, then we've got another problem that we're going to present to the Board of Selectmen that I don't think is a huge problem because I imagine the Supreme Court is going to help us solve those problems by creating a common denominator there, one way or the other. So the zoning regulations would have to be adjusted to accommodate both of those rentals. So neither require permits, neither require inspections, and neither are mentioned in the Eastline zoning regulations. The bed and breakfast are allowed, providing their overnight accommodations to guests with a maximum of seven units, but they're allowed in almost every district in town.
They do have a fee, though.
Inns, they're allowed with 12 or fewer units in most of the districts. And hotels and motels are allowed in basically commercial districts. But as I said, single-family rentals are not defined nor mentioned in either of the divisions, although there are mentions of B&amp;B by special permit in RU40s, and two families are permitted in RU12s, B&amp;B by special permits. Although it's interesting, we're saying that in a residential zone, you can have a B&amp;B by special permit. What we're talking about, short-term rentals, are not allowed, but an undertaking establishment is allowed in a residential district.
It's very quiet.
Except if you have a popular... If you have a popular...
That's true.
Then there's, I imagine, the same amount of parking problems as you could have under a one-day rental for a short-term rental. Commercial districts mention two families, both CA and CB. The commercial marine district talks about boat rentals. It doesn't talk about overnight boat rentals and do people sleep there? And is that catamount to a requirement that we're going to look at as we're looking at these requirements for people sleeping overnight somewhere? Perhaps it's not designed for that. So my simple number three here about annual income statements and property assessment adjustments, I think that would be a relatively simple fix with the same form or a similar form. While compatible to other long-term rentals requiring income statements, no permit is necessary for long-term rentals, you know, and we're considering short-term. So if we're going to do this, and if we're going to allow income statements or require income statements, then I think a simple registration would be necessary because most of the rest of the information is on the income statement. You don't need a lot more on the income statement. There are no inspections of any rentals of any kind. So I'm wondering what the 1,500 that Mr. Bundy looks at. Is it mostly commercials, salons? I know there are restaurants. I know there are, you know, all of those types of things. But it doesn't seem to call for any residential inspections at all.
Was there more than two stories? Is that something, I think, once they get to three stories, is that where that may kick in on the residential side? But that's the only thing I know of on that.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know. But I think there's going to be a lot of conversation that the Board of Selectmen are going to have to have when they determine. That's why I have some issue with Mr. Zamarka's opinion because I really think a lot of these things, having to do with number of beds and bedrooms, and is it two times four plus six or whatever the thing is. Parking, how do you do that? There was even a mention of trash cans. I don't know how we can regulate the number of trash cans on a property, but I think it's something that we're going to have to try to condense down. And some of the information that was just shared with us, which was, I thought, a great report that Gary and Greg made, I don't think we can look at this in the way we're looking at it. I think we have to try to condense down how we identify where these short-term rentals are, what we expect of them, if we're going to allow them at all. And it seems to me that the members of this board and most of the people in the public that came and talked to us were in favor of not banning them. So I think that this one form would create an opportunity to eliminate a lot of the other items that were talked about, talked about here, so.
So you're suggesting a back end as opposed to a front end? On the income statement, there would be contact numbers, names, address.
There is. There's every bit of information you could possibly ask for on that income statement.
Interesting.
And so a simple registration form, you know, I'm a guy who opposes charging businesses and people as much as they possibly can from a municipality. I think, I think there are a lot of other financial benefits that businesses and other people bring that provide the municipality, and sometimes fees are kind of getting away. But if there's going to be a fee for the fire marshal, he charges $65, for example, for a 15-minute inspection, which seems quick. But if he does, and we had a reasonable fee for 200 or so short-term rentals with a registration form, I think that would go to it. I don't know that any of what I've just talked about solves your particular problem in the neighborhood that you have with a potential problem that, you know, you have complained about.
Right.
So I think that's why I'm in favor of doing this in a zoning regulation. You know, the zoning regulation regulates land use. The three communities that have zoning regulations of their own, of which I represent one, you know, can certainly make their own decision to do whatever they want to do with it. So I have some issue with that, but, you know, that's another conversation.
All right.
So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to, on our list, four, five, and six, and thorough.
Okay. I just did a quick overview of what's going on in the country under those three categories. It's not written in the legalese of Gary Chikala. I'll just read what I have. Lotteries. Several towns have tried or are trying lotteries with different outcomes. To name a few, less than a year ago, Maryland's drew numbers, actually out of a hand-cranked thing, to limit STRs to one per block. However, a federal judge halted the lottery after the first drawing, and the town is awaiting a decision. On the other hand, an appellate court upheld the lottery implemented in Pacific Grove, California, to impose a cap of 250 STRs to be located no closer than 55 feet from each other. A few years ago, Wilmington, North Carolina, conducted lotteries, but after three years of litigation, they were overthrown. San Diego's lottery was scrapped when they received less applications than the cap they set out to achieve. Long Beach, California, implemented a lottery in 2021 to cap them at 800. Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, and Steamboat Springs, Colorado, are also considering lotteries. Caps. There are numerous types of caps towns have been trying out. Limiting STRs a minimum distance of feet from each other, one per block, one per census tract, caps by percentages, a percentage of a block or a percentage of a town, or just a cap of an arbitrary number. Some towns have different caps for owner-occupied homes than properties owned by investors. There are caps for minimum numbers a night a guest can stay to how many days a year an STR can be rented out. Many waitlists have caps. In some towns, owners have to wait a year before renting out a home they have purchased. Many more towns are imposing the biggest cap of all, a complete moratorium on any STR activity until they figure out what to do. A few examples. Honolulu Ben Rentals under 90 days but is being challenged in court. Alamo City, Colorado, has a 5% cap per neighborhood. Frisco, Colorado, has a bigger cap of 25%, but owners have to live at the property 10 months of the year. Nashville has a 3% cap of the total number of single and two-family dwellings. Zoning regulations. I found many caps and outright bans of STRs in various parts of the same town in many zoning regulations. Some university towns allow more of them near colleges, but less or none in areas further away. Some ski towns allow more near the resorts than in parts of the residential areas, and many beach communities allow some near the water, but not as many or none in other parts of town. Several towns only allow them in mixed-use or commercial areas, but not in residential areas. Parkship, Michigan, just prohibited STRs in residential neighborhoods. Palm Springs, California, allow 20% of the residential area to have an STR. Fort Worth, Texas, has restricted STRs from residential neighborhoods. Dallas, Texas, has redefined an STR as lodging, which would prevent them in residential neighborhoods. And we're also seeing in the paper that Groton is looking at banning them in certain zones of town and not others. And just a conclusion of my own thoughts. Lotteries seem very inequitable, some are insorting based on the luck of the draw. Depending on the lottery rules, a person could be selected to have an STR one year, but not win the year after, and financially, that could be hard. Caps based on other criteria are a better solution, I think. However, one cap doesn't always work for all parts of town. For citizens that have chosen to live in residential areas and feel it is their right not to live next to a mini-hotel, different zoning regulations for different areas seem to make the most sense. And I also don't agree with Attorney Zamarka on this. In Eastline, for example, Pine Grove does not want to be turned into commercial area, does not allow them, and enforces their rules. For areas that, if we decide to do it by zoning, then in those areas, maybe we'll look at town-wide regulations or have each beach community decide their own and then just enforce that. So I don't, after reading all of this, I came to the conclusion that I think it should be, stay in zoning and not do a town ordinance, unless you're banning them through the whole town, then do an ordinance, but...
Okay. Thanks, Ann. Any questions for Ann before we go on to our next topic? Okay. Thanks. Great that you took that national view of things, too, because we need to, it's not just what's happening in Eastline, it's happening everywhere. And a lot of the literature that we are reading, you know, brings us to what's happening in other towns and gives us some thought, too, some, widens our perspectives.
If anybody wants a copy...
Oh, great, okay. Well, let's pass those out. Let's just do that now while we get those passed out so that we don't forget that and be sure that Brooke gets a copy as well. Yes. I have an extra one here. There's an extra one. And a copy for Candace, because I don't think this one was emailed.
No, it wasn't.
I don't know if that other thing, do you have that colored copy on there?
All righty. So next on our list, Dan, I think was covering the topics of enforcement and fines generally.
Yeah. My searches on this don't sound like they're as good as the ones that others have done. It seems like most of the searches come up to organizations that are trying to say, this is how difficult it is to run an Airbnb because of all the different rules all over the country. Therefore, you need to hire us to manage your property for you. And it goes into that. I did find one that I sent out over today that was written on the other end. Again, it's somebody looking for business, but he's on the town side. Okay. If a town decides to make regulations and tries to do enforcement and fines, what pitfalls might you fall into? But he starts first with, you have to understand what it is you're trying, what your objective is before you set up any regulations or ordinances. So I think that's one of the things that we're swimming around, is we're not really sure as a group what our objective is. And he lists some examples here of, depending on the situation, you might have different priorities as far as what you're trying to do. I mean, the simple thing to put it down is, is your objective is not to have any. Well, that's an easy answer, right? You would think, right? Just ban them. Now, you ban them, now you've, now how do you find out if they exist? So then, okay, so he, and then, or you can just say, just keep doing it the way we're doing it. You don't need to do anything. But if you want to put in some kind of regulation or ordinance, then you should at least come up with what your objective is. So it has four different examples in his, just to get the ball rolling. One is an affluent residential community in an attractive location. Maybe what should your policy be? What are you trying to do? Next one is about if short-term rental policy objectives for an urban community with a shortage of rental housing. The objectives are going to be different there. You're going to try and keep your housing on the market for the local folks. Example C is just a little bit different that has ample housing available. Maybe there is extra for STRs without impacting the people that live there every day. And the last one is a short-term rental policy objective for a beach town with a large stock of traditional vacation rentals, and has some points to consider. The main thing, I think it's an obvious one, would be, don't ever put in policy requirements that you can't enforce. I know we've heard that Bill Mulholland, and I'm forgetting the fire marshal's name, says, "We can do this job, no problem." I think that's easy to do as long as people are coming to your door and giving you... I think that's easy to do as long as people are coming to your door and giving you the permits and playing by the rules. I think the problem becomes when people say, either because your regulations are too harsh, I'm not going to play by those rules, I'm just going to rent it out, come find me if you can. That's when it becomes hard to enforce any regulation, whether it's STR or whether it's really anything to go to business out of your home. So he points out, make sure you keep it simple, make sure the policy is going to get you what you want, so you need to understand what it is you want, right? And he was a bunch of policy objectives in the back, I don't want to go over through all of them, but it's, it was good for me to get my head around it.
Thank you.
And what they see as viable regulatory approaches, often they say, there's no way you can do this. They come right out and say that. And then they say, unviable regulatory approaches is in the third column, okay? So maybe if we take advantage of this, it's a way to learn by other people's mistakes or other people's adventures we haven't set ourselves up to. So obviously, at the end of this, he says, hey, if you need help, if you're a municipality, give me a call, right? But ignoring that, he did set up some fines here. Realize this guy, I think, is from California, so maybe his fines are higher than we'd want to think of here. Fine for advertising a property for short-term rent without first having obtained a permit or complying with local listing requirements, $200 per day, second violation, $400 per day, third goes up. So these are things that he sees as viable alternatives. Again, this is where it becomes hard, right? Do you have enough manpower to go out and look for these places? Do you have enough manpower? If a neighborhood says, this person's renting, how do you go out and prove that, collect this, and make it stick? So again, please take a look at this. And it might give us some background and help us make a decision that's effective for whatever our objective is.
So I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure.
Yeah, so Ranecus is a well-respected organization that advocates on behalf of municipalities.
Of course, because that wouldn't bring you anything other than that.
No, but I'm just saying.
I had no idea.
But, and I know that through Mr. Mahalholland, because when he's supplied information on topics, it can often come through that organization, kind of like, you know, the way we disseminate information from CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, very similar, I guess. And so, yeah, and the webinar is same thing from them. So I've been impressed that they, you know, at least it's from our perspective, from the policymaker's perspective, and not from the perspective of, let's say, Airbnb, you know, or.
So what I took out of this was basically, in the area that I was asked to look at, which was enforcement and fines, enforcement is more difficult than you could ever think it was before you get into this. And fines need to be reasonable and again enforceable, but also you've got to realize that if you end up having to go out and get somebody else to help you with enforcement, fines may have to go up, just that you can pay for that enforcement help. So that's the key to making it simple and make sure that you're putting policies in that will get you the objective you want, instead of just a bunch of things that sound nice, if they're not getting you where you want to be. It's not helpful and it's going to be onerous on your, your, and so.
Thanks, thanks, Ann. That's great. And I think really solid reminders for policymakers, and we won't be making the policy, we will be recommending the policy, but in the process of having to recommend, we have to go through the same steps and make reasonable suggestions and recommendations that can, that are enforceable. And it's a topic that came up at our last meeting, and Candace brought that up as well. Okay, so we'll move on. We're doing pretty well going through our topics today. So noise and parking. So I had my outline here. Let's see, make sure I have it myself. Okay, I passed that out to everyone. And it's this outline I passed out this evening concerning application of existing noise and parking ordinances within town. Did you get that one, Dan? I think I gave you a copy. If not, I'll just give you another one. There you go. Everyone will set down there.
Thank you.
Okay. Got that one? Okay. Yeah, so this was a, this is, to me, an interesting topic because I, we hear, and I didn't write this in the introduction to this outline, I tried to keep it on one page, but there is an introduction. Introduction being what we've heard and within our town by our, by our public, by way of our public hearing, by the way of delegations, what we have read in the literature so far has been, you know, noise and parking tend to be two issues that surface when we think about negative things associated with short-term rentals. So it would be helpful to us to take a look at how the town currently controls noise. What ordinance or what rules and regulations do we have in town that pretty much cover everybody? And the same thing for parking. So I did not make copies of the individual ordinances, but I can always email those to you. But I tried to summarize here, and we'll start with noise, the noise control ordinance that we have, which is found, you can read that online as well, chapter nine of our ordinances. And this is adopted following state statute of a noise pollution control statute in Connecticut. Our State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection regulates it. So basically, in this noise statute, we have two levels, two zones, I should say, residential and non-residential. And so, and we, importantly, we use a performance standard, which is using a sound level meter, which is required. And we have certain exclusions and exemptions, as you might guess, things like, let's say, the siren of a police car or the sirens of a fire truck. These are excluded or otherwise exempted. There's a number of exclusions and exemptions, actually. But the key, and then it also, and here we also have, the East Line Police Department is responsible for investigating, measuring, and documenting any violations. There are fines, fine of $90 per violation. And if you remember, Chief Mike, Chief Inglesteen, came to speak to us about his interactions with short-term rentals, his department's interactions. And he talked a bit about this ordinance and mentioned that it has become unenforceable, unfortunately, because this performance standard, this sound level, sound level meter, we don't have one for one. But, but secondly, that perhaps we should be using a different standard, a reasonableness standard. And I also was investigating something else called a plainly audible standard, which seems to be very constitutional. So that was interesting. But the point is, we need to do some more, our town attorney, we need to do more research on, if you look at number eight on the list, on my list, under the statute here, could a reasonableness or plainly audible standard be applied, or should the existing ordinance be amended to reflect this? So he was, Chief Mike, I spoke with him again, and he, on this topic of these two ordinances, and as far as the noise ordinance goes, he was frustrated about the ability to properly be, being able to enforce. It doesn't mean that if there's a ruckus in your neighborhood that you honestly would not call the police, it may have sound and noise issues as a component of other things happening. But as far as the sound issue goes, and again, enforcement of, a setup of fines, hard to do when you're not sure of your standard and you don't have the equipment. And it's not just that you don't, may have the equipment, it's, if you look at the way this is written, you need to be trained in the use of this equipment. And I don't know how, I mean, just reading this logistically, so the police drive up, there's noise, and they have to situate themselves in a certain way, within a certain distance, you know, from the noise, from the property line, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, to me, it's, it's all well-intended, a good example, perhaps, of well-intended, you know, policy, but maybe it needs some help. So those are, the legal questions could be answered perhaps by attorneys Amarka. Very interesting, I did, when you check the state regulations on this and you look at the 75 or so towns that have enacted this, an ordinance such as ours, they're all almost identical. And because, if you look at number eight again, the, any of these ordinances have to be at least as stringent as the state noise control ordinance or plan, or standards adopted by the EPA pursuant to the noise control, it's a federal act of 1972. So you have these standards, but the question is, can you have a workable standard? So I'm just, I was looking for areas of existing law within the town that would help us, that we don't have to go and create new things, not that we wouldn't also create new things, but what do we already have in the books that would help us? And this was one thing, and one thing that Chief mentioned, but it has this sticking point. Just to note, number nine on that, of that, on that outline concerning this noise ordinance, the three beach communities we've been talking about, Black Point, Crescent Beach, Giant's Neck, that do have their own zoning, actually do directly, but in a very limited fashion, talk about noise issues, for example, construction noise and limiting the time. And in the noise control ordinance, we have day and night standards. That's another thing. You have decibel standards using this meter, you have day and night for the two zones. So it's a straightforward, otherwise a pretty straightforward statute, but I think it's got its limitations, and if we recommend using it, it would have to somehow be, I think, amended. Parking, a different and more positive result with parking. That ordinance, and you all might be familiar with it, is, establishes general parking restrictions and parking restrictions for commercial vehicles in residential zones. And the parking ordinance that the town has applies to highways and municipal lots. And I'll just read this definition of what a highway is. It's any state or public highway, road, avenue, street, alley, driveway, parkway, thoroughfare, under the jurisdiction of the town. Municipal lots is any area under the jurisdiction of the town that's dedicated and posted for the parking of motor vehicles. And there are penalties for violating parking signage, which include fines, doubling of fines, even towing, particularly in the situation of snow, snow removal. And again, in speaking to the chief on this topic, he said violations have occurred mostly on Main Street, and sometimes in the Oswego Gachi Hills parking area, where people are, you know, there's like overflow there and people are just sort of parking willy-nilly. He's been pleased that most individuals pay their fines or contact the police department with some reason why they're not. This is important. There's no collection of unpaid fines. There just aren't enough fines issued to pay for collection services. So here again, you have this natural, I suppose I left that genie out of a bottle there.
Yeah, you shouldn't say that.
But it has to be said. I mean, it's just, you see the limitations, and most people, you know, oblige and do pay. And we do collect those fines and have a separate account for those, I remember when that was set up. So this is an important thing to remember. Excuse me, the East Line Police Commission is the body that's authorized under state law to regulate traffic, including parking signage. And so importantly, the police can't enforce parking signage unless it is approved by the police commission. It's been approved and restricts parking on the highways and municipal lots. And again, here, the three beach communities whose zoning I've been looking at, all have detailed parking restrictions. But these are more to do with getting parking permits for parking in certain areas. But so I think there's some, there's, and I think Chief, actually, when he was here, he actually encouraged the use of this ordinance more than it's being used, and encouraged some of the communities to come forward if they have parking issues, to come before the police commission. And if there's a particular area that they feel they need appropriate signage, they can make their case, and you don't need much more further, there's not really state approval, it's unlike speed limits, which, speed limit changes, those are ones that would require additional state approval. But that's kind of it in a nutshell, but my thinking here was, anywhere we can tap existing ordinances that we have that can be helpful, and we, you know, and that we can utilize or improve upon them, then we should do that, and that would be a recommendation, you know, one particular recommendation. Any questions?
Thank you.
I wish I would have known this 15 years ago. The first day we moved into our house, we had a bunch of people over helping and having a party afterwards. I've got to say that that first day.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. I know. Okay, so moving on, let's see who else we have here. We've got, yes, we have, we actually have Gary's, which is, let's see, let's see if I can find that one. It was banning short-term rentals. Yes. Voila. And so, so this was, this was, yeah, this was emailed, I believe, to everyone, and this may have come this morning to you, with the holiday, we missed Mondays. Oh, this was, it was something, oh, you're correct, okay. So it's actually.
This is my, we can share.
It was actually, this, Gary's was that banning them has always been an option on the table, but we didn't really, when we talked about regulation, we also had to remember that another option besides the various regulatory systems that we could come up with, there was also the option of banning them outright. So he made his, in his memorandum of law here, he made his, his argument, and it was very interesting. And also Greg, I know you're familiar with this, because I think you're familiar with some of these topics, but he made the argument that, I believe it was, the tourist home point.
The what?
He, he, he bases some of his argument on tourist, this tourist home provision, so as you, which is in zoning regulations. So basically, Paul, this talks about, you know, home occupations, you've spoken to that, and then there were certain exceptions, like we can have these home occupations and we don't have to go through permitting. Okay, so for example, if you're within your home and you're working as an economist, you can go and do that without requiring further permitting. And that, and then there are these, these exceptions. So, okay, so a home occupation includes, but it's not limited to, and then it lists what, what those are, but then such uses, such as restaurants, I'm reading on the second page of his backside, such uses as restaurants, tea rooms, funeral homes, barber shops, beauty parlors, tourist homes, and animal hospitals shall not be deemed to be a home occupation, service, or profession. And then he suggests that tourist home was a term that was used during the early part of the 20th century to refer to privately owned homes, providing a place to stay for travelers. And they seem to go out of fashion once, you know, we had the onslaught of motels and hotels, but he thinks that this has come back in vogue, and it's actually a way of referring to short-term rentals. So this is all by way of saying that they're actually directly, this is even a step further than our thinking earlier, they're actually, you know, not allowed, expressly not allowed because of this language. not allowed because of this language in this provision. So that's something that he bases his, his arguments on. There's also a lot of, um, constitutional law references here, which, um, I agree with him on, concerning zoning and, uh, some of the topics we've also, we've already raised about, um, the, uh, role of zoning in, um, in, uh, regulating land use, uh, and its, its appropriate role there. But this was an interesting twist to me on this, um, reading of this, the home occupation zoning. But it does, it still supports, um, the theory that, um, our existing zoning as it stands doesn't permit short-term rentals. It's just that he happened to, you know, he, he did pick up on this one thing, and I, I don't personally know the, the definition of tourist home, but I take him at his word here of his definition.
I thi- I think it is defined in the zoning regulations, as I look through it today, but it could be mistaken.
Yeah, okay.
I also don't know how he jumps to the conclusion about the definition could support a ban of short-term rentals. I think, I think in his mind, it's illegal, but it doesn't, the Supreme Court is gonna look at that, whether you call it a tourist home or a short-term rental, I think they're looking at the right of ownership to do whatever you want, so, yes.
So it, um...
Not whatever you want, but, you know.
Right. I think it, it goes, I think it, it supports the, the theory that our, we have limitations in our zoning, existing zoning ordinances, but I don't know if it necessarily gets to the point of, um, supporting the ban. Um, if, I guess it's if you don't wanna do anything, right? If, if, if that's your, if that's your goal, again, back to goals, if that's your goal, and we don't wish to do anything and keep it at status quo, then that would make sense. Okay, so we've, we've covered our, our, our documents pretty well tonight, it's a lot of information, um, you know, a lot to digest, um, so we're, we're kind of at that point of, let me find my, okay, um, so actually, we're at number six on our agenda, which is kind of, see, and I don't know if we are able to do this, but ultimately, it would be nice to draft some kind of an outline of recommendations under consideration. It doesn't mean that we're, you know, that's it, and we're not gonna consider other things, but do you think we're at that point, or do you think we need to digest more, read a little more of what we have? Of course, we have this looming Supreme Court decision, and it's one reason why Groton is not going forward with, um, completing its work, um, you know, City Council is gonna be considering ordinance, planning and zoning, has been working on, on those regulations. Um, and, um, I've gotten this, uh, in conversations with attorneys Amarka that, you know, this is, you know, he's told us as well, it's, it's important. I was able to have a, a recent conversation with another land use attorney, uh, for, for the, for Noink actually, about their, they have, they have, uh, a total, they have a ban on short-term rentals. They allow long-term and have a whole system there, but they, they don't have the short-term rentals. But in the, in, going through this conversation, you know, he was also of a mindset that, um, this Supreme Court decision will be very determinative, you know, and, um, so it's very difficult to make, to, to come up with recommendations that you feel you're totally on solid ground, but then again, I'm open to other, to other thoughts on that.
So, if, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
We're, we're talking about putting some information out for potential discussion or soliciting opinions at a public hearing?
Yes.
That's the next step, right?
Yes.
We're, we're still a few steps away from saying, Board of Selectmen, this is what we think, right? So my suggestion would be to, to use this one through ten item and say, these are, these are items that people on the committee have put some thought into and have developed some documents relating to, uh, opinions for and against, and perhaps we can make those documents available if, if, if we want.
Ahead of a public hearing, yes.
Or in the minutes that might be ahead of the public hearing, or for the public hearing, and let people come up and, and kind of have at each one of those, some of which we all don't agree with, some of which are waiting for the court decision. But I don't know, I don't know that we need much more than this. This seems to be a pretty well-encompassed opportunity to discuss short-term rentals pro and con, so, so maybe that's an easy way out for the public hearing as we're two weeks away or thirteen days away from it.
Right, because, um, I, I think I ha- I need to get that, um, that, uh, notice out, has to be, like, with a ten-day law, you know, we've lost one day, et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah, that would go out by the end of the week. Um, so, good, good thought there, uh, while that we can use, we could use, for simplicity's sake, use the...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, use the outline, uh, have it clear, and, uh, we certainly have all this documentation now, we have what we've gotten by way of emails, we have what we, was handed out this evening, so, and we have this video of us, so, um...
I, I have, I still have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Which is, these are a bunch of good things, these are enlightening, the things people have brought to the table here tonight, but it still doesn't get us to, what are we tr- what's our objective, right? Are we looking to limit short-term rentals? Are we looking to use regulation to make it so hard that people will stop adding to our amount? Are we looking, you know, what is our objective that we would then apply these ten things, consider these ten items to?
So, yes.
I wish the Selectmen would've said, here's what we wanna do, how's the best way to do it, right? Give us an objective, but we don't have an objective yet.
Well, I don't think that, we know. I think our objective is to support opinions that we can push forth to the, to the Board of Selectmen, and then they make that call, what, what they wanna do. And the public is gonna weigh in on the twenty-ninth, which could alter some of the things we've talked about tonight, yeah, somebody could come up with it.
And we, we also have identified goals, we did identify them, like, ahead of the suggested or regulation under consideration, we spent some time on that, and that was, that was a meeting, not everyone was here for that meeting, unfortunately. Uh, you were here for the goal, when we established the goals, I'm not sure, so, um, so, um, we can go over those again. Another thing I was thinking about here is, um, put, you know, uh, sort of making sure that these goals, um, and this is something, again, we can, can always convey to Board of Selectmen, but these goals are consistent with the plan of conservation and development, we haven't really been talking about that. Uh, a lot of this, a lot of these items are contained, you know, within, within that, within that plan, but that would be a good, um, reference point, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about goal-setting, uh, and making sure that these things are consistent. But, um, yeah, I mean, we could, I, I'd like to have, you know, since we've decided on how we might, uh, deal with a public hearing info already, um, I think, uh, I wouldn't mind talking for a minute or two about what you think, you know, how you generally feel about short-term rentals and goals that you, you know, based on the literature you've read so far, it doesn't mean your mind isn't open to other suggestions, and you still wanna hear the public at the public hearing, number two, but that you have some, um, you're beginning to form some opinion. I mean, I, I know, I'm beginning to, to form more opinion than I had when I started this process, so, um, would anyone want to share some thoughts? And it can be goal, you're goal-oriented. Go ahead, Ann, yes.
No, I, I think I already shared mine, but I'm leaning toward thinking it should, we should look at different parts of town and look at what makes sense in each part of town. Um, I think it should be handled through the zoning regulation as opposed to an ordinance. Um, I'm, that's where I'm leaning.
That's where you're leaning, okay.
So I can, I can say that as a owner of a short-term rental and as an owner of a long-term rental, um, you know, I had specific interests, and then as president of the Giant's Neck Beach Association, representing them, there's another line of interest there, so, um, what I've come to understand as we've gone forward is that there's a multiple numbers of consideration that we have to have here. Not just, do we want short-term rentals, people coming in, staying a day, two days, a week, thirty days, whatever it is, that's one part of it. I think the other part of it is violations that have occurred with regard to noise and, and with regard to parking, and with regard to, uh, a number of other things. So I don't think that we can just say, we are gonna recommend a recommendation for a regulation that the Board of Selectmen hands off to zoning, or an ordinance that the Board of Selectmen considers passing. My feeling is it's gonna be a combination of those two. I think some of those items that the zoning commission deals with should be developed as regulations under that. I think there's also some ordinances that can be, uh, further enhanced, that I think we're already on the books for parking and for noise, and, you know, we spoke of the ineffectiveness of some of those regulations and enforcement and all of that. And the last thing that I think we wanna do, although it could be very easy, is put forth recommendations that are unenforceable, or untenable, or just gonna be, nah, forget about that, and you're just gonna ignore it. And, you know, um, the town is ripe with those types of things that are very simple, you know, neon signs are not allowed, uh, sandwich board signs are not, you know, so are they truly offensive and do they truly, you know, bother people to the point where we need a guy to go out or a gal to go out and say, here's a fine for those items? I think this falls into some of the same thing, um, it's getting a lot of hoop, but we do have some problems that we have to solve with regard to noise, with regard to parking, and with regard to, you know, combining it in the community, and we, if Mr. Mulholland is correct, and I think Mr. Zamarka said that he was, that the permit, the, if it's not permitted expressly in the zoning regulations, then it's prohibited. And I think the very least thing we have to do is to get it put in there one way or the other, and, you know, that would be a recommendation I would have, that the zoning commission adopts regulations with language that does this or that. And then the ordinances go hard on people that are inconsiderate of the community. I think that's, that's an easy way to recommend it. So I'm kind of leaning toward doing that, I'm not sure the exact division of where those are, but I think it's starting to formulate in my mind that, you know, some of the land use things, the zoning, some of the offensive, I don't know, actions, I guess, could be, could be handled in strengthening our ordinances.
Thanks. Greg, do you have, do you have any, um, feelings or one way or another you'd like to share or thoughts?
So, thank you, um, uh, I learned something every time I come to these meetings, like, I did not know that long-term rentals had to file a financial statement every year.
Yeah, same here.
Um, and I've always been cognizant of the court cases out there and of basically treating all rentals the same, as opposed to short-term versus long-term. Um, so I, I'm in favor of, you know, Paul's suggestion, that maybe that's one way to handle this. As far as the public hearing coming up, I really do think that it's incumbent upon us to, maybe just an outline of some position, so that people who come to the public hearing, and we've talked about this before, aren't just, you know, speaking, they have something to speak about, you know? Oh, I think that's awful, I would hate that. Oh, I could live with that, I think that's a good idea, you know?
It might, it might actually be using the one through ten, add a little augmentation based upon some of our discussion tonight. So for example, you know, not everything of these in, in your, in the regulatory scheme, but, you know, maybe occupancy is one thing, maybe it's not, but...
Or, I mean, it could be as simple as, you know, we wanted to through the permit system. And then people at the public hearing could try to have input as to what does that mean?
Okay.
You know, um, I would be okay with this, I wouldn't be okay with that.
Okay. So just a, a little bit enhancement of what, of one through ten, is what you're thinking?
I mean, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, and I think I've been pretty consistent about this, and really just a, a permit system is what I'm after, that's all I really want. I think the permit system gives us contact information, it gives us knowledge of who's renting and where there are short-term renters, so that if and when the police are called, and it wouldn't be called very often, um, uh, they know, you know, what they're walking into. Um, it's, it's, it's simple, and it's easy, and it's, and it's something that I think everybody in the town could get behind. In fact, renters at the first public hearing, people who were landlords, said, yeah, you know, I could, I could deal with it, and in fact, Airbnb suggests that a permit system is appropriate for short-term rentals. So I don't think it's a really contentious position, but I think it's something that takes us a long way towards understanding and controlling this process.
Okay, well, thanks. Gary, do you, do you have any preferences or thoughts on that?
I'm, uh, like Greg, I'm a, I'm a fan of the permit process. Um, I don't know how deep into it, uh, we should get, but I think what it does is it's good for transparency, um, it's good to have an enforcement vehicle where bad actors can have their permits yanked, and then they're no longer in the short-term rental business. Um, but also, um, and Bill Bundy, he had said this when he spoke to us, but when, when I spoke to him last week, he emphasized it again, that having a database of contacts of people to get in touch with immediately and having a lay of the land would be very, very helpful for him. Um, and he said that he, that Fire Department and the Police Department share the same database, so be able to have that information would be very, very helpful for them. Um, so I'm, I'm becoming a fan of the permitting process, for sure. Um, I'm kind of agnostic on ordinance versus zoning regulation, I don't know enough about either to make a decision, but I guess as a homeowner, um, if there was a permitting process, I would think that an ordinance would cover the entire town, so the enforcement would work for people in the separate zoning communities and for the rest of the town. But, again, I'm, I'm agnostic on ordinance versus regulation.
Okay. Dan, anything else?
I'd say a lot of what we talk about is the easy stuff, right? I think it's what we expect that we're here for, which is the easy stuff, noise, parking, permit, know who's there, safety, I know we talked about safety of these homes, right? When you're in your own, own homes, you know how to get out, whether it's smoke or whatever's going on, or a fire, but someone that just came in the night before, not the same situation, right? So, so that's some of those things, those are the easy things that we can take care of, and we may even have things on the books already. What, what concerns me and what I think permits will help us with is understanding how big this is, right? And then it becomes, now that we have the information in front of us, if it becomes a problem, now we have a database to come, to go back to. My concern, longer term, and I don't know that we're there, that we need to do anything about this, but our number six and number seven on the goals, those are the most important things, I mean, it's, it's apple pie and moth- apple pie and mother and the nation, public safety and fairness, yes, but number six and seven, this clarity as to where a commercial area is and a residential use, um, I think we need that long-term, and that is, I think that's the key to this preservation of the neighborhoods and communities. I consider myself very lucky to live here, in Eastline, I consider myself exceedingly lucky to live in Crescent Beach, okay? And part of that is that the people that live there, live there. The people that are there enjoying themselves, or not enjoying themselves if they choose not to live there, right? Um, and there's opportunities in that, I would, my concern is that we've become very successful here in Eastline and Niantic, we have a great downtown, and next thing you know, it's all renters. And then you lose that community, right? How are you, or you have a few people trying to maintain the community, and if I live in a community of three hundred homes, and a hundred and fifty of those are renters, am I just providing a backdrop to their happiness? So those are the ones I, I'm worried about, and although I don't know that we have to solve those right now, I think having a permitting process... I think having a permitting process and taking care of the easy stuff may get us to the point where if that becomes a problem, I mean, everything's driven by the market, right? The economy is gonna play a big deal on this. If it turns into Airbnb's no longer make any money because it's so hard to run one, I don't know if that's true or not, or the fees get so high, I hear people complaining, saying it's just as cheap to go to a hotel these days rather than Airbnb, right? So, you know, who knows where, where the economy is gonna take this whole thing. But for now, that's the things I would like to be in a position to protect ourselves from. Whether we need to act right now or not, I guess I'm, I'm looking forward to January 29th to, to speak to some of those.
Anne, did you have anything else to? Yeah, just for, for myself, yeah, definitely number six and seven and goals is, is very important. And I, I think, however, that, yeah, I'm beginning to see this, you know, this relationship, very close relationship between our things under consideration, our suggested regulations under consideration and the goals we've set, because if you, if you start to think about permitting, well permitting, you know, starts to take the STR out of a residential use and put it more towards a commercial use. I think, I think if, you know, underlying some of the things I'm hearing is that we're, we're no longer seeing a short-term rental as a kind of, mom and pop does this infrequently and it's all okay and it's been done in the beach communities forever. I think we're see, at least I am beginning to see them, you know, as a commercial enterprises. Not knowing I'm totally there, but in every instance, but certainly I'm, I'm beginning to see that by the kinds of things that we're suggesting. I think that's the way, you know, for suggesting, you know, going through a permitting or registration and all these things. And then I think to the point about, a very important point, and then I think we, we, we did hear this in the, in the negative comments at least, it was the preservation of neighborhoods and community. I think that's, that's pretty clear, that, you know, you, you know, and that's, that's clear here in East Line and it's clear in the literature that we're reading in other communities, whether it's reading your local newspaper and reading about Legyard or Stonington or any, you know, or, or anything nationally. I think that's a major concern is, you know, are we changing the character of a neighborhood by allowing this kind of what looks to be a commercial enterprise, you know, happening? So, so for me, I mean, I, you know, I definitely agree with a, a, an approach that has zoning at its core and then ordinance to supplement. And I want to leave the authority of, for those communities that can zone themselves, let them do what they wish to do. So for example, Black Point Beach Association does allow, expressly allows the, the short-term rental situation has to be longer than seven days. It's, it's, it's over a week, it's a week or longer, whatever. So if you were to have an ordinance and your theory of, of the case is that that ordinance supersedes, you know, then that could be problematic. So I, I had mentioned in the goals that I wanna make sure that we, we account for all law, the zoning law, and make sure that there's compatibility. Now, see where I find that in my list on, under goals. Yes, number 11, let's see. I think it's number nine, solutions compatible with existing zoning and other regulations. So, you know, I just feel as though we, we can't be meandering, you know, and, and deciding on an ordinance 'cause it's, it's sort of quick and, and seems to cover a lot of things, when in fact we have this sort of hole in our zoning, so to speak. So, but that's where I'm at, is just to make sure that what we do recommend considers that. And I think we've seen that, we've seen information, different theories of, of this, you know, on, on ordinance versus zoning, so I just point back to the literature you've been reading. In fact, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments, that, that information that was updated last October, and I think I passed it out at a meeting recently to you. There, there was a reference to some cases where one attorney was raising that very issue of the ability of an ordinance at all to supersede land use and zoning. So, interesting topic. But, yeah, so I think, okay, so going forward, I think we can get our note, proper notice out for, let's look at our agenda here where we're at. Get our notice out properly. Reference our materials. And, let's see where my, where we are here. So that would, that's coming up on January.
29.
29, yes, which is a Monday, no holiday there. And then, do you think we need any other, any other meeting between now and then? Or we're okay with, we seem to be okay, 'cause I'm on number seven and I think like 7A for any other regular meeting right now, we, we don't have to set that at this time.
Well, I think if you could, assuming that you were gonna take a shot at drafting what you wanna send out for the public hearing.
Yes.
You could send that out by email, we could all make comments and get it back to you within, you know, let's agree, 48 hours.
Yeah, so there we have, it's a good idea, but I think we have limitations under meeting rules. So I can't, I, it would be, I can't really, unless I actually do an, an email meeting with you, I really can't solicit your comments on something.
Well, Madam Chair, are we, are we okay with this one through 10 as a conversation starter for the public hearing?
I think the last we said on that was one through 10 with maybe a couple of, a little bit, a little bit of meat on the bones, but not a lot from, from today's discussion.
So if we, if we all agree on that?
If we all agree on one to 10, do you wanna just keep it to one to 10?
And then we have the meat on the bones here for people to look at, you know, I mean, 'cause we're 13 days away, so.
Yeah, so we, yeah, 'cause we really don't, it's very.
I don't think.
Without getting into having a meeting by way of email, which we do not want to do, right?
Or in person.
Or, right, and we don't want another in-person meeting, so.
So I think you just list, these are some of the items discussed. Please feel free to add and discuss something that you're interested in from the public and then.
So what's that look like, just the list of these 10 documents or to include the documentation we provided?
Oh, it would include the documentation.
Okay, good, yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, so I think it would, so we would have the list of the 10 things under consideration. And then we would be sure that all of the reports that were given tonight are, are part of what would be available to the public and, and express that in some way, you can express that.
Another separate length, meeting materials for a public hearing.
Yeah.
People can click on it and just have them all.
And see that, and then.
Certainly give people enough to talk about it in the public hearing.
Right. And then, and again, this entire meeting will be on tape, so it can be listened to as well, so I would put that in there as well, so.
What, we're being recorded?
Yes, we are.
And you've been brilliant all night.
Yes, that's right, without knowing that you're being recorded. Okay, so I.
All right.
All right, I think that sounds like a plan, okay. So, report to Board of Selectmen, I mean, we're still in this sort of February timeframe, but it's, we'll, we'll just see, let's see what happens with the public hearing and then, and the day of the public hearing, we should have a brief meeting following that, so we can, you know, quickly make some assessment, did we hear anything new and different and what direction are we going?
So I thought the last meeting, we talked about targeting a communication to the Board of Selectmen, either, either one of their March meetings.
Yeah, probably.
We gotta wait for the Supreme Court.
Right, which is supposed to come, that's supposed to come down in February, so it should fit.
So I hear different things about the case and in the newspaper, I think it mentioned February, that newspaper article in the day did mention February.
Right.
Talking to a couple of lawyers about that, you know, not entirely clear. I mean, and, and if it's ever held over and that, you know, we don't make that spring cut, so to speak, it could be the fall. So I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think, I think we're so deep into this that I would hate to abandon what our thoughts and say, let's wait for that Supreme Court decision and not have some baseline recommendations.
I agree.
I mean, do we share that feeling?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's not like we, you know, we crafted something already and it's gotta be tossed out the window, so. I think there's enough there and I think.